Okay folks. We're gonna start the town, Hopkinton Town Council meeting of January 22nd, 2013, with a moment of silent meditation and salutes of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey Frank?
Yes.
You were really fast there. What we missed was, we need to make a motion to reconvene to the council.
Oh.
That was all.
Okay.
So moved.
Make a motion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Motion, need a motion to sit as licensing board?
We'll move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. Commercial haulers license renewals. Let's see. Open a hearing on the renewal of the following commercial haulers licenses. Allied Waste Industries, Corey's Rubber Removal, Capalvo's Waste Services, Easy Waste Systems, Ed Palmer Disposal, On Time Disposal, Patriot Disposal, RPE Waste Services, Sanitation by Quint Perry, CWPM LLC, Sam Pacolo and Junior and Sons, and Waste Management. To the clerk, I guess have all the applications and filing fees been received and notices posted?
The exception of Mr. Palmer.
Okay, Mr. Palmer.
No application?
No application.
Okay. To the council?
It is Mr. Palmer, oh Ed Palmer.
Is there a motion?
Motion to renew the commercial haulers licenses as discussed except for Ed Palmer disposal, as long as all applications filing fees have been received and notices posted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions from the council? Yes Barbara?
Just, I have a request on the very first one, John Porter. He has not applicable his address and his date of birth and home phone number. Could you please get that from him because it is applicable? Even if it's the same as his business address? Thank you.
Anyone else? David?
Yeah, I'm fine.
He shouldn't since licensing Lisa until he provides a, okay? Good catch, brother.
Thank you.
And that was Capalvo?
No, it was Porter.
Porter. The very first one in our package.
I agree.
Oh, okay.
But I also want to thank them, they, almost everyone has done the origin, state of origin of license and the numbers pretty consistently, and that's really great. And especially, he's important because he's from Massachusetts, he's not from anywhere around us.
So would you like me, the easiest thing to do amend the minutes to remove Allen to the next meeting?
No, you can do, it's okay.
The motion is okay the way it was written?
Yeah, just, why amend it to include that he has to provide that?
So moved, as an amendment.
I'll look.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any other council questions, concerns?
No. Anyone from the public?
Anyone from the public wishing to speak on behalf of these renewals?
Or against them.
Or against them. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Could we also send the list, once this is, once it's completed and everybody's got everything in Lisa, can we make sure that this list goes over to the police department so they'll have it?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the campground license renewals. Open a hearing on the renewal of the following campground licenses. Ashaway Pines LLC, Clint Ramston. All the, the application filing fees been received Lisa?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to renew Ashaway Pines LLC campground license, subject to all fees paid, notices posted, all town taxes current prior to issue, and all state and town regulations being met.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion from the council Scott?
Yes, I know that Ms. Pansera is here and I know her family has been concerned about that site, but I'd like to have, I'd like to know what the status is, because at the last meeting I asked when that was going to, what was the status of that site and what the progress of that is, and I believe it was June of this year they're supposed to open, but not only that, this is not like a typical campground, I believe it's similar to the proposal they had down in McAllen's Corners on West Side, it's also for RVs, it's not strictly campground in the sense that we normally know it to be.
Sites, yeah.
So, how many, how many RV resorts do we have in town that's similar to this, other than a normal so-called campground?
You referring to your question to Bill?
Yeah, whoever can answer it, because I don't have an answer to that question.
I'm not sure, Scott.
I think, I think almost all those campgrounds are RV.
Of those campgrounds are RV.
Both tending and RV.
Right, correct.
I don't wish we find this.
They all are.
They all, yeah.
I thought that this proposal was not exactly the same as other types of campgrounds that we have.
Oh no, it's the, it's the same. It's bigger and newer. Mm-hmm. Bigger and newer, they're gonna have bigger machinery, bigger RVs, but, yep.
All of which has already been approved by the planning board, you're not, you're not sitting here tonight in second guessing the planning board or anything like that, you're just talking about whether they've met the requirements to get a license issued, that's it.
I know.
The planning board did all the hard work on it.
And we do wanna make sure.
And I also know there's been litigation and that's been settled in the court of all certain concerns.
Correct.
But Ms. Pansera.
It's done.
But.
But we do wanna make sure state and town regulations have been met before they get a license.
Yeah, but also I think the council as a body should be updated on the progress of that because it's in the South Hopkinton section of our town, and I think people, particularly in our vicinity, will have an interest in what the progress is on that.
Like, Scott, if I can interrupt? You can check with the planning office, I'm sure they'd have updates for you. I don't know, they need to report back to us on that. If you wanna just check on it yourself, that's fine. No? Okay. Does any member of the public wish?
I'm not done yet.
No, I'm sorry.
We didn't even go around the table yet. What I'd like to know in reference to this proposal is, I don't know what they have completed, all the things that they needed to do, any stipulations the planning board had, so I don't know, I'm, I personally don't wanna approve a license until I get something from the planning department in reference to this. I'd like to know their progress and postpone this to another meeting, that's what I'd like to do.
I don't know if that matters.
It matters to me. I, I wanna make sure that they've done everything they're supposed to do.
I don't know that you're gonna be able to be certain of that until it's completed.
Well, that's what I'd like to have, something from the planning department, I'd like to know.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
I'm unfamiliar with it.
I'm not challenging what you're asking for.
Right, right.
All I'm saying is that, I'm not sure you're gonna be able to know that all of the requirements, for instance, the planning board put on it, have been met until the thing is completed. If you want to stake out the position perhaps that until it's completed, it's not in line for a license?
Well, that's what I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, I mean, that's a different story.
Since it's, they don't need a license really yet, because they can't open until they're done.
Right, right.
So maybe we should postpone this until a later date, and that makes sense. Later, later, closer to when they're ready to open, and they're the ones who can let us know.
I, I have a different take on it, myself, I mean, but everybody, you know.
I also, I also would.
Hold on, one second Barbara. You know, I think we're just looking at the license renewal, I mean, I think that other town departments are gonna actually verify that things are done correctly and to specifications. You know, that's my take on it, but certainly you have your thoughts on it, but Barbara?
It's also a renewal, right?
It's just a renewal.
Granted it before.
Right, just a renewal.
Right, and it's a renewal and it's subject to all state and town regulations being met.
Correct.
They cannot get the license unless they are, they have done the state and town regulations being met and all town taxes prior, current prior to issue. I, I don't have a problem with it. And I'm certainly sure if anyone is concerned about it, they can go through the planning board and see where it stands.
Lisa, do you have a question?
Last year you granted it to them for the first time. Nothing was issued of yet because it was so premature or preliminary, they were after just the fact that they could get one. But, it's just the fact that they have been granted one this year, same thing, I'm not issuing anything until I know, as the other concerns have been brought up, that they've complied, that would entail, I'm sure, a grant or not inspected.
Sure.
Yes, checklist, right, but you'll have to check.
Sure.
There's various things that have to come in, so I'm comfortable issuing any.
Oh, so it's not a problem?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It's fine, I'm happy, I'm satisfied on that end then.
Alright, anyone else? Have council thoughts?
I'd like to ask Council Thompson, you, I think when you issue a license, and it's been over a year, it was last year, it would seem that there'd be some type of progress on a big item like that, are you satisfied that we should vote on it tonight or do you think we should delay it?
I'm satisfied that Lisa just explained that fire department, the police department, or building and zoning, would need to go in there and verify that they've done all the things they need to do to be up and ready and all, and so that tells me that they're not gonna get the license anyway, until she's satisfied.
Correct.
I would wanna know that's the case.
While she hangs on.
Then it's not an issue then.
Fine.
But the council has the ultimate authority to grant or?
I can also monitor this if you like.
Give us a little?
And create a checklist and as they get closer, then you'll have a better idea.
Okay. Anyone else from the council?
I'm also.
Does anybody out in the public wish to speak on behalf of Ms. Pansera? Please come to the podium. Thanks.
Andrea Pansera, you actually just raised a couple of the issues that I wanted to raise tonight with you, and I do find it kind of interesting that a governing body would issue a license or grant a license before something is even operating, but that's kind of my take on that. And I do agree with Scott that the council is the final governing board on this, so that the campground, my understanding, really cannot operate without your say-so. And if you had any issues as a council, regardless of whether this had gone before the planning board or the zoning board, I believe that you could still raise them. So that's my opinion, and I want to put that on record. I know there are many approvals that they still have to get from the town, from the state, and possibly federal. There's a lot of wetland, there are environmental issues, so I might ask you to amend that to include federal as well. This has been going on quite a while, the proposal for this, and as you know, it also hasn't been in litigation. My family members, the owners of the property, on record have brought it to court, and we have been to all the planning and zoning board meetings. One of the results of that is that there have been stipulations by the planning board, the zoning board, and there has also been rulings by the court regarding boundaries, so that there are a lot of things I think to look at and to check off before a license could be approved. One of the main qualifications I believe is ownership of the land, proof of ownership, so if there are still any disputes over boundaries and who owns what, I think that's something the council should consider. What I would like to suggest, and I think Lisa has come up with a way to do it, but is, it is to make sure, perhaps with checklist, to go over everything that the campground has to have, all of its licenses, all of its permits, that all the regulations have been met, and that it is in compliance as well with court decisions. If you need any of that information in terms of the court decisions, I think I can provide that, but your town solicitor may have it on file too, I don't know. And lastly, I want to say that, I know that my family has brought this up a number of times here at this town hall, and that we are most concerned that our rights are protected. It is not that we are personally against campgrounds per se, but we want to make sure that our rights are protected, that our land is not violated, that, you know, we can continue to live the type of life we'd like to live on that property, as we have for more than a hundred years, as close as possible, that we are taxpayers and voters in this town as well, and that we have our rights just as well as the campground owners do. Okay? So I appreciate you listening to us all these times, and I hope that we've been heard. The last thing, I asked last time if I could be notified if this comes up again, and I was notified this time, and I'd like such notification to be made again. And I also understand, let me clarify what Lisa just said, that even if you do vote to approve at this time the license, that it would not actually be issued to the campground until everything was okay with you guys, and that they could not operate unless everything was okay with you guys. Is that right?
That's correct.
Without a license, correct.
Okay, I think that's it.
I will, if it's agreeable to the council, I'll offer amendment that, for the record, that a certain checklist is developed by a town clerk will have to be met, so it'll be in the permanent records of the town.
No.
No, sorry, on the planning board already has the checklist.
Lisa doesn't have a checklist, go ahead.
Right, but they do, and she will follow it.
Okay.
Right.
It really is through the planning board.
We'll make sure it's taken care of, Ms. Pansera.
Well, we're in agreement that Lisa will have her informal checklist and she will not issue a license from the clerk's office until all of this, all the town stipulations and regulations and everything's been met.
Okay.
Yep.
We'll be keeping an eagle eye too.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pansera.
Okay, any further discussion from the council? Scott?
There's another discussion.
Yes, sir.
Hi Brian.
Hi Brian.
I represent Clint Ramston over at the Ashway RV. As far as I know, we have met all the town and state regulations for this license, that's why we entered the license last year on this. As far as a checklist, at Whistler and Pines, we never had to have a checklist, so why are we being singled out for a checklist on this property?
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay.
The issue is whether or not, once it's built, it fully complies with what the planning board required, that's basically what we're talking about, is that all of those, all the things the planning board require, all of the things that you promised the planning board you would do, are done, once it's done, once the project is built. We can't know that until the project is built.
Alright, but, but isn't that full on a certificate of occupancy? I'm not sure, I'm just asking that.
No.
No?
No.
Alright, and I mean, as far as the legal, if, we could table this to next month so I can get his lawyer down here to answer those legal questions there. Ms. Pansera, I have.
I'm not saying you want to take it, I think they're about to grant it, it's for a grant.
Yeah, I don't think it's necessary.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Frank?
Oh, Ms. Pansera, you wanna come to the podium please?
I was just reminded, there have been changes made in the original proposal since the planning board took a look at it. For example, I believe the original proposal called for two wells, it's now down to one well, and I believe that some of the boundary lines have been adjusted, so there are things that have changed along the way, and that is another reason, I would say, for a review. Again, it's not been operating, it's not an existing campground, it's not built yet. The only thing that I'm aware of that is there right now, myself, is a flat stretch of ground. Okay, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to issue a decision on this. Anybody wanna make a motion?
We've already, it's already done.
Okay. Second, all the, second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn as licensing board and reconvene as council, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda.
Yeah, it was like.
I need to pull December 17th.
Okay. Motion to approve the town council meeting minutes.
Let me check on that, 'cause I got, there was one that was a typo.
Did you want the 17th or the 7th?
I circled it, so it's gotta be the other one, not the 17th.
Your 17th, okay, so you're okay on the 7th?
Yes.
Alright, motion to approve the town council meeting minutes of January 7th, 2013, accept the following report, town clerk, approve refunds submitted by the tax collector, and approve abatements submitted by the tax assessor.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining, I wasn't around January 7th.
I don't think so.
I have to abstain.
Okay.
Seventeenth is now all yours.
Yeah, the 17th, there's some verbiage in there, that, let's see here, page, was regarding some discussions that I had with Barry Ritchie on the capital improvement. I've got one figure but not the other, so I'd rather just, I guess, hold it.
Hold it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, yep. And on page 12, the top of page 12, December 17th, I just wanted to make a slight clarification. No, no, no. That's, where it says Hopkinton Land Trust needed to look at, actually I wanted, needed to run their organization as a business, not look at. So, that was it for me.
I'm being picky, boy, but, 17th, on page 2, 7, sentence from the bottom, it's 2012 instead of 1012.
Page 2.
Which reports? January 17th?
December 17th.
Page 2, how many?
7 from the bottom, page 2, December 15th, should be 2012. Small, very small quote. I'm being picky.
No, that's, that's a good, that's a good one.
Come back.
Not a little bit of typo.
Hey, I like that. Shows that you read my hand.
That's all.
So you, so we're gonna table these until the, well, we're not the table, and we'll just let them come up?
Yeah, you gotta figure it out.
Okay.
Do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay. Next on the agenda is the first public forum, anyone wishing to speak? Next, under council presence report is, this actually, this matter is something I kinda helped, I looked into based on a taxpayer's request to me, and I've worked on it with Bill McGary, the town manager, and Rita Dean, the tax collector. And it's not up for discussion at this point until we get the ordinance together for discussion and vote ultimately, but I just wanted to give the council just a little bit of a heads up as to what it may entail. It's really just gonna, actually, it's a small token for us to grant a taxpayer if they're late on one quarter's tax bill beyond the 10-day grace period, we'd be able to waive the one-time late fee if they haven't been late in the last five years.
Okay.
So it's a very, very nominal expense to the town, it's, you know, 10 to 12 to $15, but yet it'll allow the folks, if they haven't been late in the last five years, to be able to, Rita Dean would research that and grant that waiver. But, you know, more, more to follow, it's just something that, it's a small weight, I think, to say we're trying to help out the taxpayers as little as we can without a great expense to the town, so.
So it's not a waiver of interest, it's a waiver of penalty?
Yeah, it's a penalty, a waiver of interest penalty, right.
Okay.
So, but more to follow on that.
In the timeframe, you had a timeframe in mind of how many days you'd waive in addition to the 10, how many days were you looking at?
Well, it, no, I'm not sure exactly.
It wouldn't be of days.
It would be.
It would just be a waiver, a one-time waiver, no matter how many days.
Oh, what if it was a year?
No, it's only the most recent quarter.
Only a quarter, it's a quarter.
Okay.
So if you owe four quarters?
So it has to be within that quarter.
Correct.
So, but you, so you need to, I think it should, I think you should have a time limit, you know, so think about that.
But, actually, Bill, you wanna?
I might be able to shed some light on that. There is a time limit. I mean, they have to have lived in the residence for a minimum of five years preceding the overdue tax payment. You can only go back two years, so in other words, if, if you had missed a tax payment in excess of two years before the deadline, you can't go back that far. In addition, it's just a one-shot deal, so if you owe four quarters, like in year three, you can only take one quarter, and it's just the interest, the overdue interest on the quarterly tax payment, which doesn't really amount to a lot of money. We've already prepared a, an application form for the residents to fill out, we've been obtaining, Rita has been working pretty hard on it, she's obtained a sample ordinance from about a half a dozen towns, and I'm currently reviewing them and editing them, and once I get them, I'm gonna send them up to the town solicitor and have her review them. I've spoken to a couple of town managers, and they've said in the last three or four years, they've only had like one or two requests, it's a very nominal amount. It's more of a, kind of a good faith effort to show that the town is.
That we're thinking of the taxes.
Yes, yes.
Right, Frank? That was my thoughts, but it's really not up for discussion at this point, but yeah, did you?
Just a question.
Yep.
Bill, isn't the current policy that if you, let's say you missed the first payment, that you then pay a penalty on all four quarters?
Not under this, not under this law, this will be specifically for one quarterly payment that you didn't, one overpaid, underpaid quarterly payment.
What about the other three quarters though?
No.
So you're gonna, you're still gonna get a penalty for not paying those?
Sure.
Yes.
So there'd still be a penalty of some sort, but there'd be an abatement of such?
It's the most recent quarter that maybe.
Okay, just so there'd be a small piece of, okay.
It's just, it's a one-shot deal, just one quarter.
One quarter, okay.
That you could, you know, get back a credit for a tax payment, the amount of the interest that you didn't pay.
And the reason this came about was, like I said, the taxpayer approached me with, they had never been late in 14 years, and they had to pay a late fee, and they thought maybe they could be granted a waiver, and it's just not an ordinance yet with the town.
Right.
The state has something in place, and we just need to kinda draft it to tailor it to our, our needs, and.
Basically, we have a draft ones in place, you know, that should go to the solicitor next week, and it's the foundation, the ordinance will give us the authority to do it, but it's based on enabling legislation that's been passed by, by General Assembly and signed by the governor in past years, and other cities, towns, cities and towns have jumped on that enabling legislation, so that's a legal foundation for.
Yes, Barbara?
I would just like to say, I think that's a really great idea. I know people that have paid their bills on time for years, and they get sick, they go on vacation, and it's one time, and it's so infuriating when you've been so good for so long, so I think it's really great, I'm glad you're doing that. I think that's a real, it's a real respectful move toward, you know, citizens who pay on time.
And the other thing that brought me to think about this thing, this item was, you know, in banking, 'cause I work at a bank, you know, if you've never been late on a, an overdraft charge, we have some discretion to waive that, so that's kinda what else kinda got me on the bandwagon, I'm gonna think about, you know, maybe there's something we can do and.
Even credit cards will do that one time.
That's right, that's right. Lo and behold, we have something in place by the state already, and it was just a matter of Bill and Rita helping me out with it, so.
That's great.
Thank you.
It's a very good thing, thanks a lot.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the town managers' report.
Thank you. Just very briefly, during the third week in January, Finance Director Laura Kenyon and I conducted the annual individual meetings in the town hall council chambers with all the department heads to discuss their respective upcoming FY14 annual budgets, and I also met with Laura several times and continue to meet with her to develop our final proposed budget for the council that's due on February 1st. January 16th, I along with numerous other town officials, attended the 2013 omnibus meeting at the Charahole Middle School, and lastly, during January, I worked with Planner And lastly, during January, I worked with Planner Jim Lampier, Council Solicitor Pat Buckley, and officials from Rhode Island DEM and Fussin' O'Neill on the funding and development of a townwide stormwater management program plan. But that's still in the works. It's a monumental task, but the agreements themselves should be on the February 4th council agenda for approval, and then we just move on from there.
Yes, Bill, Barbara has a question.
Actually, I wanted to thank you. When I was reading the townwide annual multi-year goals, I really appreciate that these proposed annual and multi-year goals are practical, attainable, affordable, and measurable. I think those, that's a great statement. Thank you very much, and I certainly hope we'll continue along those lines.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Bill? Next on the agenda is, under the new business, is consider, discuss, and award bid for the purchase and replacement of the Department of Public Works Fuel Management Distribution System to Service Station Equipment, Inc., of Uncasville, Connecticut, for the low bid price of $10,870.
You want me to make the motion?
Yeah, the discussion.
Motion, move that the Hopkinson Town Council award the bid for the purchase and replacement of the existing fuel management system at the Department of Public Works to Service Station Equipment of Uncasville, Connecticut, for the low bid price of $10,870.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
I'm not, don't wanna vote at this time. Can't we discuss?
Council discussion, Scott?
The only thing is, like I've remarked, my bids in the past, I noticed the highest was $18,000, and the lowest was like 10, and that's quite a spread. And I'd just like to, Tim, how did those things happen when you have that type of a gap between 10,000 and 1 with 18,000? How does that happen?
Because they're doing it blindly.
Because, I mean, that's like double, that's almost double.
Yeah, there was a big gap in the, so we actually got together with Service Station Equipment, who actually does our service anyway on the systems. Myself, Dave Caswell, Matt, I can never get his last name right, he does all the computer stuff, and Jim, who does a lot of our own electrical, we talked to them to try to make sure everything was, we went through everything in that bid, you know, is this gonna be this way, this way, this way? And we were there for an hour, just drilling this guy to make sure everything was meeting what we're supposed to meet. And we also, the same, when we put this out the bid to get the information, to put out the bid for the packet, we had two different companies look at it to make sure that we had it right. And the one that actually got the bid is not the one that put it together either, so.
I noticed that was like the one that was too up in the bid price, I believe.
Yeah, I, there was a wide range, and I was shocked to see that much of a difference, so. So that's why we went through this, believe me, we went over and over with this to make sure, what about this, what about this, for, right through the whole thing, make sure. And we had every, all the different people we had available to go over with them.
I'd just like to comment with respect to that concern. We put out a bid package that we advertised, and we had very specific bid specifications that were listed for anybody who was interested in bidding. They were out there, they were online, they were in print, they were at the clerk's office, so they were made available to everybody. In addition to that, on November 21st, from 8 o'clock to 2 o'clock, we had a mandatory pre-bid inspection at the Department of Public Works. So anybody who wanted to bid had to participate in that inspection, and that was supervised by the Director of Public Works and the foreman, so these people knew what they were getting into between the bid specifications and the mandatory pre-bid inspection. So why those bids were, you know, far apart from one another is basically anybody's guess.
Okay, actually, Bob, what, Sylvia?
This replacement, what was, do you remember the date that we put, put the first win in, when we did that? I know it was the 90s, and I forgot what year it was. You don't remember the date?
It was long before me.
Oh, okay. What I was gonna get at is, obviously, this is a, you know, technology is always changing, and it's been, it's been since, I would think, 95 or thereabouts, 95 or 96 it went in, but you think that the life of this system will be 20 years? I mean, that's your, that's...
That's our hope. I mean, it's...
Did you base it on anything in particular?
Just what we've been told.
Okay.
And they tell you, but they ain't gonna put it in right, you know, the people who service them. And that's why we went with this particular Fuel Master. I mean, there are other ones out there. Actually, Gasboy themselves make one, and that's who is there now, but they're made in some third-world country. They're very difficult to get parts for. That's why all the people who installed the fuel management system, none of them would recommend them to us. Fuel Master is, you know, is made in the United States, and I guess they're a very big company and doing very well, so it's... You know, I tried to shop around as best I could to find out anything about any kind of fuel management system, and this is the name that kept coming back. I, and they said the life expectancy, probably around 20 years. I can't guarantee that, you know, it's just what they tell me and what are you gonna get?
Well, it was close to it, the last, the last system.
Yeah, I would say so.
It was pushing that, so...
Because I was, I've been there since 99, and it was there before I came here, so.
Right, I was on the council when we did it the first time around, and I just couldn't remember what year it was. But obviously, it was, it was not later than 1996, so we got a good number of years in, and it's still holding up.
It is, but it's obsolete, and you can't get anything for it, so.
All right, that's all I, that's all I wanted to talk about. Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia. Barbara?
My question is, I know you've done everything possible to make sure that the $10,870 is gonna give you exactly what you want. If, you know, they swear through their teeth and they still do not give you what you want, can that bid be pulled? And you can look at it again? I'm just saying, they can say everything they want, and I'm sure they're telling you the truth as they know it, but if the parts come and they are not as specific as you have specified, can you then pull the bid back and say no?
Once the bid's awarded, Barbara, it's awarded. What we could do if it's a breach of contract is terminate the contract. If that's what you mean.
Yes, so you, it would be breach of contract, and then you would...
Could be, yep.
But they have all, like Bill said, they all had to go through the system before they could even bid to try to make sure nothing like that would happen, because we didn't want them to come in and start working and say, well, you need this, well, you need that, this is why, you have to come in, you have to look at the system, you have to sign in to make sure that you know what you're getting up into before you start onto this.
I just think the question was good, that it was really 50%, it's almost 50% higher and then lower. So that is a scary number to go with the low bid, and then they have forgotten everything, even if they swear to you they haven't. I think sometimes the low bid is the scary number.
And if it wasn't the company that we normally work with anyway, I mean, I'd be a little more concerned. But anytime we've had them come down and work on anything, they've been right up front with everything, and they've been very good about fixing it. It's not just some company that we haven't heard of coming off the street to work with.
So someone you've done, you've dealt with. Okay, thank you.
Tell them to come on over and move in at exit one.
You've got letters of recommendation, this company has to, other places they put these systems in?
I have it, I can, but I have not, no.
But you've done work with them before?
Yeah, they do, they've done our service work for a couple of years now.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with them. They're current customers of ours. You've worked with them, and it's a low bid, so it's a...
And one of the other companies, the people from Lemlin, who actually originally helped us write up the original quote, when they come in and they saw that, you know, because there was a list that you have to sign in, they saw that Trask was, was bid on it, and they saw that Service Stations, they said, if any of these people you get, you'll get a reputable job. And I think it was Lemlin that was here when we opened the bid, and they said that when Service Station, when they got the, had the lowest bid, he said, well, you'll get a quality job from them because we do work with them. So it's just, you know, it's a lot of hearsay, but they would have no reason to say that, I guess.
Unsolicited advice.
Right, but I mean, he could say, you know, that, you know, but he's not...
Yeah, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of awarding the bid?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next, under new business, is to consider, discuss, and impose a nominal increase in the cost per gallon of gasoline and diesel fuel charged to the nonprofit agencies that use the town's fuel distribution system. You know, I wanna preface this, Bill, if I could, because the only item, I guess, for me was, I wasn't quite sure what our intent was, and you can hopefully just let me know. Other than the increase in the per gallon price for gas, do we also want to have the nonprofit share in the maintenance fee? I guess that was my only question.
Well, I kinda left that up to the discretion of the town council.
The answer is yes.
And I put in the price per gallon, beginning at 3.5 cents, I think all the way up to 5 cents, so that either one of those, both ends would be covered. Well, this, this emanated, this was an initiative by former council president Tom Buck some time ago. And then we did, when we decided that we desperately needed that fuel distribution system because the one that we had was obsolete, because you couldn't get parts, there was a suggestion that, you know, perhaps we should charge the nonprofit agencies that use the town's fuel system in order to pay for the fuel distribution system over a 20-year period. And then we also considered whether or not we would charge them the $250, the estimated $250 per year for the maintenance fee. That's what it averages over a 20-year period. Obviously, in the, you know, the first several years, there is little or no expense, but the expense comes on the, on the other end. In any event, I proposed a projected increase in the cost per gallon at 3.5 cents, 4 cents, 4.5 cents, and 5 cents in the charts that are attached to your package. The projected life of the new fuel management system is 20 years, and its projected cost is $10,875. An average annual cost of $544, and that does not include the annual maintenance cost of $2.50.
$250.
Sorry, thank you. $250. The five nonprofit agencies that use the fuel distribution system are the Hope Valley Ambulance, Ashway Ambulance, Ashway Fire, Carolina Fire, and Hope Valley Fire Departments. I sent letters to each one of those agencies back on January 7th to advise them of this meeting, their any issues or concerns, and invited them to attend. Now, these five nonprofit agencies that currently use the system would proportionately share the annual cost based on how much gasoline or diesel fuel that they use. What I did is I broke it down with the assistance of Tim Teft. I broke it down into town and nonprofit gallonages on a chart, and then the projected annual costs, and you can basically see how that breaks down in your package. It would be, if it were 3.5 cents per gallon, and the town was going to eat the $250 maintenance fee, the actual cost per year to the town would be $544, and the actual additional revenue raised for all five agencies, the total would be $528. So that would be just over like $105 per year per nonprofit agency. So we're not talking a significant amount of money, but it's something that would pay for the system over a period of 20 years.
Thanks, Bill. Scott, you wanna start?
I think what I hope people understand is the town of Hopkin, the town government is giving a courtesy to these nonprofits, which, with the exception of the two, you know, the ambulance cause, we have fire districts which are government entities, so actually, fire protection is technically government fire district, not a private entity per se, although like Ashway Volunteer Fire Service is private, and the fire district's a governmental aspect of it. And I think that, I find it interesting, Carolina is with Hopkins, and not that I object to it, but apparently Richmond probably doesn't do the same thing we do, because that would be Richmond.
I'm not sure.
No, they don't have it.
Okay, but I don't have an objection to it, but I think as a, to help the town of Hopkin, because we're actually doing a favor to these other entities by letting them buy our fuel, and I'm sure that it affects, you know, the price, because we're buying more probably bulk. I'm sure there's a benefit by the amount of fuel we buy, too. There is a benefit, or is it no benefit in that?
Of course it's a benefit.
Per vol, by volume?
Yeah.
No, there's no benefit.
There's no benefit, so in other words, we buy more fuel versus something else, we don't get any, there's no discount or anything.
It depends on the price per gallon of gasoline per day.
Okay, so it has, it doesn't matter about how much you buy?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. But I think we're doing these other groups, which are some government entities, except the ambulance cause, we're doing them a favor, so I think it's more than reasonable to expect them to help us.
What is your proposal? Which one do you want?
Which option, Scott, I guess you...
Yeah, which option are you going?
I don't really know what the number is, but I think we should... I'm intrigued to hear your remarks, Barbara, because you brought up something earlier that, about charging them, and I'd like to hear what you think, because I don't really have a number, but I think it certainly should cover what we're talking about, the maintenance, because we're doing them a favor.
Okay. Sylvia?
I mean, this, I actually wanted this when we first started out, because it just seemed that we were doing them a favor, it was the right thing to do, we're helping them out, and at the time, it just didn't, it just didn't work. And I've mentioned this when Vinnie Cordone was here back in 2006, and I'm glad that with, with Bill McGary, he picked it right up and looked at it. And I appreciate the detail that you gave us.
Thank you.
It makes it much easier, as far as I'm concerned, to make a decision, so I'd actually like to see us do the .045 increase. The only question I had was, and maybe Tim might have an idea. I do, I do like this additional increase. It helps with the new system, and, but, and it pays part of the maintenance fee, and the town uses the system too, so we should be paying part of that maintenance fee. In other words, it doesn't need to be all on them, so I thought that was a fair amount of money, anyway. But my only question was, if I'm the nonprofit, and if I say, oh gee, now we gotta pay .045 more, does that, how far away are they now from going to the gas station and buying gas? That was my only question.
Tim, I think Tim's gonna address that.
Okay.
Maybe he can help. I don't know if it's an easy answer.
Yeah, I made up a chat. I don't know, do you guys get the chat on?
Doesn't look familiar.
Okay, we made one, because Bill told me to, you know, check and see what the prices were. So I took three different days, different prices, and the gasoline on October 23rd was one of the days we did it. I called Petro, who's our supplier. Our price was $3.45 a gallon that particular day. Hess was $4.07, Cumberland was $4.09, Mobo was $4.29, Valero was $4.09, and Spicer was, so there's almost like 50...
Okay.
A big difference there. On 11/21, ours was $3.76, theirs was $4.07, $4.09, $4.09, $3.90. On 12/4, ours was $3.31, theirs was $3.93, $3.85, $4.09. So it's still a pretty good savings, even with the additional 4 cents.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for putting it in perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Small sample. Okay.
I am interested in both the 0.45 and the .5, because the gallonage that we use a year, the total gallon, one-third of our total gallons go to these five nonprofits. That's a huge amount, and the minor cost of .045 or .05 doesn't include replacements, repairs, anything that we need as a town to do to this process, and the new fuel, the new Gasboy, and they're using literally 33% of our gasoline. If anything happened, we carry the insurance, we carry replacement, we carry repair. I think that it's certainly perfectly reasonable for them to carry the .05, is my preference, because it should also include the 250. Now, of the 250, they do not have to pay the whole thing, it's only a third. They should only be responsible for $83, which is a third of the annual maintenance. And I think if you look at the 7.54 on the page with .05, the 7.54 minus 83 is 6.71. They would basically only be paying 6.71 additional, because the $83 a year would be included in that 7.54 if we're at .05. So they're only, of the five of them, it's still $120 extra, $115 extra a year. And I think that's perfectly adequate, and it's reasonable, because we carry the, we carry everything else that's related to... because we carry the, we carry everything else that's related to fuel, including spillage, replacement, repair, insurance, everything around Public Works. And I don't think that's unreasonable in the least. We're not, it's not just a gift to them, it's an enormous savings. And we use our town's facilities and our manpower to maintain this. So, I have no problems with the .05. I think it's reasonable. And that .05 would then incorporate the $83, their proportion of the $2.50.
I think...
Excuse me. Out of the way I see it, the average cost per year would be $544 without the annual maintenance fee. So, if they paid $7.54, they would actually be paying $210 of the $250 for the maintenance fee.
Which, since they don't carry insurance, replacement, and repair, I don't think that's unreasonable. Not to mention manpower and physical facility, and snow plowing, and everything we do to make sure they can get in there and get gasoline or diesel. I just don't have a problem with the .05. I don't think it's unreasonable, and I think we serve them very well.
I will say that I support and thank Councilor Palvo for her remarks. And, you know, it's kind of misleading referring them to nonprofits. In a technical sense, they would be, I reiterate, the fire districts have taxing power. The ambulance clause are, do get a stipend from the town, both ambulance clause. But, we're doing them a big favor, and I don't think it's unreasonable for them to do this. And if Councilor Palvo chooses to put that in the motion, I will second it.
Which option, Scott, are you looking at?
The one she said about the .05.
Mr. Hubbard, your thoughts?
Bill, is the entire expected cost of, projected cost of this distribution system over 20-year period being laid on these nonprofits? In other words, we're not going to, the town's not going to pay anything? Is that right? When it comes to 20 years, 20 is down the bike, we'll have this money a cent. So, the entire distribution rehab?
All but $40 a year, under the five cents. Because they would be paying $210 of the $250. So, the town would be, you know, eating $40 a year times 20, it'd be $800 over a 20-year period.
Okay. Okay.
What option are you thinking you're leaning towards?
I'm not crazy about these nonprofits, the so-called fire departments and the ambulance clause, paying the entire bill for a distribution system. I just, I think the town, the town uses the system, and the town should pay something. And if they use a third of it, a third of the system, in a sense, they take a third of the fuel out of it, maybe they should only pay a third of the overall cost of the operation of the system and the replacement of the system.
So, what option are you?
So, I can't say I'm leaning towards the five cents, no.
Well, but then a third is $4,000 for a new fuel management system after 20 years. And they haven't paid more than $1,000. And plus $4,000 plus the $2.50 a year, the maintenance, plus the replacement, the repair, and the insurance, and the manpower. They haven't paid anything at all toward it, really.
Today?
Well, no, even after 20 years. I mean, you're, you know, this is, it's just the fuel system here, and $250 is an annual maintenance estimate. It's an estimate. It doesn't mean that's going to be the maintenance. There are replacement parts that you have to get for fuel management systems over 20 years. There are repair costs.
True.
There are manpower costs, there's insurance costs, there's spill costs, there's issues with all these people getting gasoline and making sure it's not spilled, because we have to clean it up, they don't have to clean it up. I think that it's perfectly reasonable, because there are so many other things that we, in our, in our basket of goodwill, that we are handing to them, and we don't mind at all. I mean, it's a third of the gasoline. And these are...
Barbara, if I could just interrupt you one second, Barbara?
Mm-hmm. I just want to make a motion when you get...
Yeah, yeah, sure. David, what's?
I'll hold up. I'll vote.
Okay.
On a motion.
I just had some quick comments. You know, it's fairly simple, folks, from my perspective, anyway. Either we want the nonprofits to share in the expense, which would be the five cents extra, or we want them to not share in that expense. And then, that option is pretty clear, too. I do like Sylvia's notion that, about the 45 cents, but I'm leaning more towards the five cents to have them cover, be covered under the plan, have them pay for the plan as well. Because it is a great service that we offer, and I think the price per gallon is a lot cheaper than they can get elsewhere, so.
Well...
I think it's a reasonable cost.
I agree.
I assume that Sylvia's motion wouldn't be for the five percent, but if that's voted down, I think Popper or I, or somebody, can come back for the five percent.
What could do is make a motion for a four and a half, and then you could amend it to five, and then we'll vote on the amendment, and we'll see where it goes.
Right.
Make it easy that way, if you want to. A move that we impose a nominal increase in the cost per gallon of gasoline and diesel fuel charged to nonprofit agencies that use the town's fuel distribution system of .045.
Second. One second.
I make a motion that the profits be...
We could do the same motion and just put in .05.
Move that the Hopkinton Town Council approve an increase of .05 cents in the cost per gallon of gasoline and diesel fuel charged to nonprofit agencies that use the town's fuel distribution system. It's right, it's not paid, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
At .05.
.05.
And thank you, Bill. I even appreciate the fact that you wrote a letter to nonprofits and gave them the date and the time, and a very detailed letter to let them know.
Oh, thank you.
Absolutely.
Yes. Public Works Director, thank you, Tim. Okay. Next on the agenda is the boards and commissions. Consider appointments to the following boards.
Oh, we missed the goals.
I'm sorry.
We're not going to get out of here that quick.
I'm sorry.
Thank goodness.
All blended together here. Discuss and consider adopting the proposed townwide fiscal year 2013-2014 annual goals and fiscal year 2015-2017 multi-year goals developed by the town department heads. Mr. McGary, please.
Thank you. As you see in your package, this is an annual initiative. We meet with, I meet with the department heads, and we discuss the proposed FY14 annual goals and the proposed FY2015-17 multi-year goals that were developed over the last several weeks by town department heads. And basically, what we do is we take the ones that we submitted last year, determine which ones were achieved and which ones were not. And the ones that were achieved, we just drop them from the list. And the ones that were not, we either carry them over or also delete them from the list. The meeting just generally takes about two hours, and we get a lot of input from all the department heads. And basically, the annual or multi-year goals are listed as you have them. They are not prioritized. They are, they are just listed in no particular order. There were 10, for the record, there were 10 FY14 annual goals. The first one was to develop and implement a townwide stormwater management program plan. Number two was create employee job descriptions for all town employees. Number three was to construct a vehicle impound yard at the police department. Number four was to develop and implement a tree planting policy and design for town parks and recreational areas. Number five was to purchase and install computer hardware and software on a townwide basis. Number six was to replace the DPW radio communication system. Seven was to acquire hardware for the efficient storage of assessment apps in the clerk's office. Eight was to purchase and install the new townwide financial accounting software package. Nine was develop an option to send tax bills via email to town residents and business owners. And number 10 was to create and adopt an ordinance to increase tangible tax receivables on campers and, on campers stored on campgrounds within town. Five of those annual goals are budget-related, and the other five are non-budgetary items. If you skip over to the multi-year goals, there are seven, and this is from FY15 to FY17. The first is to expand and renovate Town Hall to consolidate municipal offices. The second is to replace regulatory traffic signs to comply with the manual on uniform traffic control devices. And those are basically regulatory signs, stop signs, speed limit signs. Number three is to remove and replace the Crandall Field Playground. Number four is to rewrite the town zoning ordinance, ordinances, and land development subdivision regulations consistent with a comprehensive plan. Number five is to develop and adopt a business license ordinance. Number six is to create and establish a police department policy and procedures manual. And number seven is to purchase and install radio, camera, and surveillance equipment in the police dispatch area. Now, of those, there are, two, three, four. There are four that are budget-related, and there are three are not. And what we tried to do is, in our proposed budget for FY14, is to take those goals, either the annual or the first-year, multi-year goals, and factor the proposed funding that's going to be needed into the FY14 budget. I mean, everything is tentative, and the funding is decided during the budget hearings by the town council. But we just want to make sure that if we agree to these, and the council wants to fund them, that the money is available to do so.
All right. Thanks, Bill. I just wanted to, before we get into discussion on these, is take the annual goals first. I guess, which one of the 10, Bill, were on the prior year? Or, I guess what I'm asking, is there anything that was on the prior year that... Any new items of these 10 that wasn't on the prior year? That you know of?
The impound yard, the vehicle impound yard.
Yeah, I would, I'd have to get the list.
Oh, that's okay.
I'd have to get last year's list. I don't have.
I think the vehicle impound yard at the police department was in last year's list.
Oh, that's fine. I just, I didn't know. Scott, you want to start out?
No, I, the vehicle impound yard, basically, is that just fencing, putting a fence over at the police station?
That's a vehicle impound area that would require, you know, asphalting a certain area and also fencing around it along with at least one surveillance camera.
Scott, do you have any questions? We'll take the annual goals first, please.
Annual goals, what type, exactly what is, says create employee job descriptions for all town employees. How many town employees don't have a job description? I'm sure that you have a pretty basic idea what somebody's function is.
Well, the job descriptions are not by employee. They're by employee job classifications. So, it would depend on how many job classifications are there.
I just thought we'd already started those.
We have.
Okay, so you're just finishing them?
Yes, we, basically, because of the workload and also of the lack of existing job descriptions for employees, what we've been doing is anytime there is a vacant position, before we advertise for that position, we develop a job description for that position. We have probably somewhere between 12 and 14 at this point.
Okay.
But if you have like nine maintenance operators at Department of Public Works, you would only need one job description.
Okay. So, you're just finishing what you've already begun, effectively?
It's an ongoing project, yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to go on the multi-year goal after the annual?
No, just let's finish the annuals. We'll go around to each council person. Do you have any other questions?
Like, Public Works radio communication system. I know we agreed to have, I guess, the foreman to have his own cellphone. I mean, I know it was last year, but what is the status of Public Works radio communication system? Because I tell you, I don't know.
Tim, leave.
I listen when you're out there plowing. Lots of people do.
The radios, because we try to have the radios in the truck, but to tell you the truth, the radio in my truck is shut off 80% of the time. It doesn't work. I can be a mile or two down the road, and I can't hear anybody else. We've had to come in and work on the things. They put a new antenna and stuff like that. And we have other trucks that, I don't know what it is. You just can't make the radios work right in them trucks. So, it's, I guess it's a low-band system, the high-band system. I'm not a radio expert by any means. But they say the other band is much better, and it needs to be updated. We've got some real old radios and stuff.
But you have a cellphone, and your foreman has a cellphone.
Yes, we do. But, I mean, I'm calling the guys, and, you know, I have my, I'm not complaining about using my cellphone a bit, but I have to call all them on a cellphone, too. And the radio system just, it does not work.
And more than one person can listen.
Right, exactly.
Scott, anything else on the annual goals?
Not right yet.
Okay. Ms. Thompson?
Bill, the, where it says, where is it? Purchase and install computer hardware and software on a townwide basis. That's something I thought we had already done.
There is...
Is that something because the technology changes every two minutes?
Let's see. We have $37,600 in the reserve CIP account from last fiscal year. And we plan to use that money. There have been some computer hardware, some computers that have not yet been purchased. We still have seven to purchase from last fiscal year. And that money has already been approved by the town council and the budget for last year. So, we're going to take that money. And we have, we have ordered and received 10 from the previous fiscal year, and then we have seven from the coming fiscal year. And we're just going to install those for next fiscal year. So, actually, there won't be, we won't really have to purchase the computer hardware. It's really basically installation. And the money to do that has already been approved in the last fiscal year.
Great.
Can you offer a different wording then on number five?
Yes, and that's a very good point. We should probably just delete the first two words.
Install. Okay.
Because we don't have any request for money in the next fiscal year's budget for any computer equipment.
So, it'd be install computer hardware?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I have.
Just install, right?
Yes. Barbara, annual goals, please.
And number eight, purchase and install a new townwide financial accounting software package. I just want to say thank you. I think it's about time. I'm really glad we're doing this, and I hope you get it done efficiently and well. That one, I think it's been really crucial. We have different financial packages all over town, and I will be very happy to see a single one for our town to deal with its PayPals or Pay-whetters. I think it's just great. Thank you. Have a great time. Have fun with Laura.
I've worked very closely with Laura on that, and we've made some significant improvements in the financial reporting, especially the budget. And you'll see that this year, once you get your budget on February 1st. But there's $15,600 in the CIP from last fiscal year. It's in a reserve account that's already been approved by the council for that financial software package.
That's fabulous, though, but I think it's absolutely important, and it has been hanging on for quite a while now. Thank you. Glad you put it in.
Anything else on the annual? Okay, David?
Frank, I'd just be very pleased to see all of these accomplished in the next year, absolutely. Like it all.
Yeah, I had some questions on number five and number eight, which Sylvia and Barbara brought up. And I'm pleased that, it seems like all the money that we're going to be using for at least some of the ones that do cost money have all been allocated already.
Great.
So...
And in addition to that, like, I mean, we're very cost-conscious. The first one, which is a budgetary item, we received a 25, we are about to receive a $25,000 grant from Rhode Island DEM to do that stormwater management plan. And on number three, the vehicle impound yard at the police department, we're either going to use burn money, burn grant money, or get it through the federal forfeiture money to pay for that. So, that won't come out of the operating budget.
Excellent.
Bill, I just have one quick, on the forfeiture money, is that awarded annually to each department, or is that sporadic, I guess?
Yeah, I don't, the chief might know.
Chief, Barbara?
Federal forfeiture is all from seizures that we've made in the police department. So, if we make a drug... So if we make a drug arrest, that money goes into the, into the fund, and it can only be used for certain things. This would specifically apply to an impound. I have no problems doing so. But there's not an annual fund. We, when we get it, when we make arrests, we make seizures, and that builds our fund.
So that can change year to year?
It can.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
Move that we accept the fiscal year 2013, 2014 annual goals with the minor change to number five. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On to the multi-year goals. Scott, you want to start off again, please?
Well, I'll tell you, I was looking, I know that it's a subject which is really, I find a place where I was. One of the hot items in this town, where if you look at the vote, which the town is evenly divided on, is expand and renovate Town Hall to consolidate municipal offices. And a lot of people in town have strong opinions on both sides, I think, of that issue. I think that's a fair statement. The bigger question we have is, I obviously think we need space here, but do you really think within the next couple of years that we're going to go back to the voters and ask them to vote on another bond? I know the vote was very close.
Bill, Bill.
The vote was close, had lost by five votes, but the referendum was not whether or not we needed to expand and renovate Town Hall. The referendum was specifically for authorization to borrow $900,000 to do the job. We're taking a different tack, and basically we have, I think, $692,000 in the reserve account, in the capital improvement account now, and in the proposed budget, we're looking to add another $250,000. That'll bring it up to about $950,000. The following fiscal year, if we're able to do the same, then we could probably get started because the building wouldn't be finished till the third fiscal year, which would allow us enough money to complete the project without having, going back to the voters, because we wouldn't need authorization to borrow because we did what the people of Hopkinton like us to do, is to save on an incremental basis from year to year, kind of a cash and carry and pay as you go. And that's the plan.
With no debt service?
Yes.
The other thing I think that a lot of us are involved about, and I think I used it in my campaign, is number four, about the town zoning ordinances, and we should, council should stay in the next couple of months to start working on that, so we can, so there, there's no question of inconsistencies with the comprehensive plan of our zoning ordinances and to tighten them up. I think one of the concerns that people have about zoning in town is that it's got to be as clear as possible with no vagaries. In other words, people, even a layman, pretty much should be able to understand it because in that way, any official in the town in their official capacity knows what's expected and what's permissible. I know that things in zoning, there's certain, there has to be some leeway because of the quality of the land, the landscape of the planning board, but pretty much we have to tighten that up so there is no, everybody pretty much is on the same page and that nobody feels that somebody's being favored and somebody isn't. So I look forward, and I would like you to make this probably, after we get done with the budget cycle, maybe I'll make that top priority.
Okay, Scott, thank you. Sylvia.
The first one, the expand and renovate, Bill explained it perfectly, thank you. And I would only add that the consolidation of the offices into this one building with an addition has already been approved by the voters numerous times previously. So the fact that they didn't want us to borrow a large amount tells us they don't want us to borrow a large amount, so we go to the save method. So, so within three years, it will move forward. And of course, it is a consolidation, and it will allow us to close other outside offices, and it will provide, it will solve some, some problems that we have, little problems here and there. Everybody's going to be under, most of the people will be under one roof, and Public Works and Police obviously will still be out there in animal control. But everybody else is going to be here, and it offers a lot of opportunities for other ways to use some of those other spaces. For instance, next door offers a little more rental opportunity for upstairs perhaps. It's a possibility for maybe just a professional. But anyway, so I, I think that's, it's good to have that down here. The other one I had a question on is number three, and maybe, Tim, you'd be more familiar with this. The remove and replace the Crandall Field Playground. I, I haven't been there to look at it and actually walk around it and look at it in a couple of years, so what's the plan?
Honestly, that was brought up by Mary. I really don't know.
Oh, okay, so you're not familiar?
It should be replaced, that's for sure.
Okay, all right.
Thanks, Tim.
I don't know if you have any more information?
I can add a little bit to it, and speak with Mary Sawyer. She said basically that it's in pretty much deplorable condition at this point, and they're looking to remove and replace it. And it's our intent to request the funding through this year's CDBG grant in order to obtain those funds to replace that playground. So hopefully that they won't come, the money won't come from our operational budget. We'll be able to apply through Jeff Marsh and at CDBG and, and see if we can get the money through them.
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, Barbara.
Number seven, the purchase and install radio, camera, and surveillance equipment in the police dispatch room. I'm assuming you're going to look for a grant for that?
Yes, I know we talked about the burn grant and federal forfeiture money, but the police chief is here, he might be able to address that a little more specifically to you.
Yeah, I just didn't know whether that would go under forfeiture. I don't think it does, but I assume you're going to look for something.
Yeah, it's going to be a fairly expensive project, but everything there is antiquated. There's several, there's a burn grant, there's forfeiture money, if each one is available. There's a possibility of Google money. The Google money going to state police and other communities is designed to assist smaller local departments. We're hoping we might be, be able to get a small portion from that as well, and I'll be drafting some proposal for, exactly for that.
And do you think, do you think some of the forfeiture money actually might fit under this?
Our forfeiture money? Absolutely, but there's going to be enough of it.
Right, right. But I mean, even for a particular kind of camera or?
That, that would.
You're going to be blending grants effectively.
Right, that would, that could fall in there. A lot, a lot of times there's provisions that you would, the town would have to spend a certain amount of money to allow that forfeiture money to be used. So that may be a possibility as well.
You'll work on that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, David.
Couple of things. Bill, you say we're going to use the capital improvement account to eventually put an addition on the Town Hall. That's, that's, that's a way of thinking then, one way of thinking. But what have we, what have we used that capital improvement account for in the past? The reason why, why are we thinking about taking the whole ball of wax and spending it on the Town, Town Hall where there might be other things we want to use that account for, and then as a result, all of a sudden we get stuck because we don't get any money in the account?
Well, we have, we have a very extensive capital improvement program. It's, it's 17 pages long.
That's why I haven't read it yet.
Yeah, there are 17 different projects that are in our three-year capital improvement plan. And the Town Hall addition is only one of them. And there are, there are some that are funded the first year and not the second and the third, and, you know, vice versa all the way along. So we have a lot of flexibility within that three-year CIP plan. If we don't spend the money the first year or the second year, we can still spend it the third year without going back to the council. It's kind of a flexible account. It's used for big-ticket items, generally speaking, that don't lend themselves to be in place into the operational budget, the day-to-day stuff. So it's an extensive plan, and this year it's 17 different projects. Some are funded, some are not.
We're not going to be taking money from any of these other projects then and falling, falling into an account for the, for the Town Hall expansion?
No. No, because we don't have a pot of money, let's say $500,000, and, you know, $250,000 is going to go to the Town Hall expansion. Each one is separate and apart, they're not dependent on one another. So, I mean, if the Town Hall addition were like $10,000, you would just reduce the overall amount of the overall CIP by 240,000.
Especially the snowplows, which are 180,000.
Another question, and maybe I could address, address the council on this. Are we circumventing the vote on the Town Hall expansion by saying, okay, we're going to, we're going to increase your taxes a little bit and take that extra tax money and stick it into this capital improvement account, and eventually we're going to get our expanded Town Hall?
No, no.
We're not getting, getting around the vote?
No, the financial vote was to borrow 900,000. That got turned down.
Turned down.
Right, but the votes for the Town Hall expansion got approved many times, right? Sylvia, I don't know, two or three times? So no, I think we either have a choice of borrowing the money or saving it. And I think it's, you know, it's pretty clear based on the votes that residents want us to not borrow that money, to that extent anyway, and we chose to go another route and save the money on the debt service, so.
Because other than a very small interest rate, I don't see much difference between a bond and raising the taxes. You're raising the taxes to put money into the capital?
Well, I think we're raising the taxes.
Well, money's coming from someplace.
Yes, from operating.
It's in the operating.
May I, maybe I can clarify? I see what you're saying. If you don't take that 250,000 and put it somewhere, then that's, then your budget goes down by 250,000 in a sense. But what we've been able to do, because Charahoe fluctuates from year to year, we're very lucky, it's not always up here. Sometimes it goes down and another town takes the heat. So because it changes a little bit, what we do is we've looked at our budget from the previous year, and then what we've tried to the best of our ability is to flatline the municipal and not have an increase. And so far, we've been, we've been able to do that more often than not, and to keep it flat. And for a while, it was going down, down, down to get a reasonable amount. And then we were able to flatline it, and then there were some little increases in the tax rate. So, so in a sense, you're right, but the voters in the very beginning were asked, do you want to appropriate X amount, whatever that amount was in the first one? And it came from the fund balance, it came from the surplus, and the voters said yes. And then, since then, we have set aside money. Two occasions? I'm trying to remember how many times. I think it was twice more, and they, and they, and it was, and it was a go. It was the one time when we came up with this option of, you know, folks, we could borrow right now 900,000 or whatever the exact amount was. And because we borrow now, we expect that if we keep saving, the construction costs go up. And we believe because the low interest rates are so low that it'll break even, we could borrow the money now instead of postponing and saving. And the voters said no. And so they did say no. So we'll just continue to sock away an amount that we're comfortable with as long as it doesn't cause tax increases. If you can keep your municipal budget down, then we've gone along with an amount.
But also, I think we handle things just like you do in a home, is that you save money if you want something. Like when you, when Tim needs a $200,000 truck, it's because we have put aside every year 50,000, 50,000, 50,000, 50,000. And that's how we run our budget, just like you do in your home. And we save year by year, whether it's 10,000 or 2,000 or 100,000, for something we know we would like, so that we don't do bonds. And I think this was one that I agree with Sylvia, it was just, the interest rates are just so low, it's going to be a wash. However, they chose for us to continue to save, we'll continue to save.
I will say that I voted for the referendum. I know Sylvia and I were the only members of the council that actually wrote letters to the paper, supporting it publicly. But I think if you listen to the voters, people will give you different answers. And, and I did hear from voters about that.
I just don't, I just don't want the voters or the taxpayers to say, oh, so we told you, or at least have the taxpayers to say, oh, we told you we didn't want this Town Hall expansion, and so what you're doing is just saying, okay, well, we'll just raise your taxes a little bit, we'll get out of your taxes every year over the next five years, and we'll get the money we need for your, for the expansion that we want, and too bad for you, we're just going to raise the taxes, whether it's two cents or seven cents or eight cents, whatever it is, a thousand.
If I could just make a quick side note to that, David. Like Sylvia had mentioned, our municipal budget's level funded.
Right.
So, you know, all, all the increases are attributable to Charahoe. So that's your, that's your argument, basically.
But also, we went to the people to say, this is what we want to do. Do you want us to be able to start saving money? And they said yes.
You think they just didn't like the idea of a bond?
They just didn't, right. And, and I personally like Hopkinton for that. We are very careful when Tim just spent almost, I don't know, three or four hundred thousand to buy the rollers and the trailers and the snowplow, because we had saved up all this money. And it was amazing to me, because most towns don't do that.
Frank, just one, real quick, real quick, on Crandall Field. Bill, how, how, should I call it dangerous? Is that, is that playground in bad shape to the point that we shouldn't, we should tape it off, that we shouldn't allow kids on there anymore?
Not according to Mary Sawyer, no. But it's something that we need to consider, you know, replacing.
I don't want somebody getting hurt.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
I don't want a lawsuit, either.
Okay, my two cents on the multi-year goals. Trouble is going last as you get all your thunder stolen, but anyway. Number three was actually a concern of mine. It seemed like it was okay to field, but I'll defer to Mary Sawyer on that. If she thinks it's in dire need of replacement, that's fine. The only other one I had a question on, Bill, was number five, develop and adopt business license ordinances. I guess if you can maybe just touch upon what it, what that means, and I guess my concern is I don't want it to overburden, you know, the local businesses with additional paperwork, and I was hoping that that would actually help things and not hinder things.
That's a good question. That's a holdover from last year, and that came out of the Tax Collector's Office, Rita Dean. And basically, it's going to be a way to collect unpaid taxes on tangibles, equipment, because they have no way of doing it now. So if we, if we required all the businesses in town to be licensed for a nominal fee, we would have some type of leverage if they didn't pay their taxes by not issuing them a license so that they couldn't operate until they paid their unpaid taxes.
On the intangibles?
Yes.
Okay.
I actually have a draft of that on my desk for you right now, so you'll be seeing that in not too long.
Okay, great. I didn't know what that was, what it was dealing with, but that makes sense. It's kind of like a mechanism in place to.
One thing that I want to really point out, we've got some that are, we're talking five, four or five years, and they have not paid. Four or five years. We're not talking about all the other businesses that pay on time. It's just a few that don't, and they have, and they just don't pay.
There's no recourse.
Right. And they know it, and they love it.
Well, soon, yeah, that'll end soon. Okay, that's great, Bill, I appreciate that. And that was the only questions I had on the multi-year goals.
Move that we approve the 2015, 2017 multi-year goals as written. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, good luck, Bill.
Good job, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is boards and commissions. Consider appointments to the following boards and commissions. If I could just make a quick point, Lisa. We forgot Mimi Johnson, she was here for an interview, so if we could put that on in two weeks for her approval, that'd be wonderful. She was.
Affordable housing.
Affordable housing, right. Mary Carlson, yes. She was omitted.
I'd like to.
Accidentally.
I'd like to make an appointment to the land trust. I'd like to appoint Tommy Thompson to the land trust.
All those in favor?
I'd like to appoint Sarah Windsor to the land trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'd like to appoint Dan Harrington to the zoning board review.
Second.
All those in favor?
I'd like to appoint.
Frank, I should, I should have stayed on these because I wasn't there for the interviews.
Correct.
Oh, okay. I'd like to appoint Michael McNamara. McNamara, I know I'm not pronouncing it right, am I?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. To the historic district commission, second.
All those in favor?
Aye. I'd like to appoint Mary Ann McNamara to the. I'd like to appoint Marian McNamara to the conservation commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to appoint Nadine DePola to the tax board review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm voting because I know all of them.